Okay, I've just started recording.
Good morning. Welcome to the Seabrook Emergency Board Meeting this morning. I will read the emergency declaration. I share the Seabrook School. Emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 penalty executive order 2020-04. This public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom for the electronic meeting. All members of the Seabrook School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through the dialing of the following number 646-876-9923 and webinar ID 946-2259-2265, or by clicking on the following website address, which is listed on the agenda. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 Office at www.sau21.org. If anyone has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103, or email r evans@SAU21.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be by roll call vote. Let's start this meeting by taking a roll call vote with each member states of presence. Please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Roll call, please.
And when I call your name, please make sure that your microphone is unmuted so we can hear your response. Forrest Carter?
Yes, I'm alone.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Here with family.
Jessica Brown?
I'm at work. And I'll be on and off the meeting.
Kelly Huber?
Here with family.
And Mike Rabideau?
Here with the dog.
I have the roll call.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to say a couple of things. One is that we do go into non-public. The public will be able to make comments.
I think we're gonna need to repeat that because you're breaking it.
Section where in participant, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
All right, going close to the tree, sorry. The meeting will continue. We most likely will go to non-public. But in the case, and either way, the public will be able to ask questions through the participants by raising their hand at some point in time, and we'll limit that timeframe to about 15 minutes or so if possible. Dr. Lupini, would you like to start, please?
Certainly, I can start. So on Wednesday night, we met with the Joint Board and introduced a set of recommendations as promised for our schools based on a safe return to school. Our charge from the beginning was to attempt to get students back into school five days a week in a full schedule safely. Did a number of surveys in that process. We've looked at a lot of data. We've had medical advisors working with us. We've paid attention to the safety elements of that type of planning revolving around the number of students we can have in a classroom and the types of protocol that need to be in place. And we have made recommendations based on those elements, as well as elements around staffing data specifically. That is, the accommodations, the modifications necessary for some employees to return to work based on their particular needs in terms of their health needs, the health needs of their families, and their childcare issues, given the decisions that are being made in school districts around us. It's a very complicated set of sort of metrics to look at. We have made, we were asked to try to think about each school district individually in terms of our ability to do that, and we have done that. And the recommendation that's in front of the Seabrook Board to start the year, and I really want to emphasize to start the year, is a return to school classrooms and in-person model for pre-K through 4, and to move to our enhanced virtual learning experience for grades 5 through 8. I want to say to this particular board, something I said to the Joint Board the other night, which is probably more important here than in any of the other discussions. And that is that these recommendations are based on the data that are in front of us right now. They could change. What we know is that we can put 10 to 12 students in a classroom. As we start to try to figure out whether that recommendation works at the elementary level, we have to see what numbers of parents are sending their students back and whether we can actually accommodate that, whether that will work. We also continue to evaluate the other data points, but that class size issue, that numbers of students issue, is a significant one in your district. And so what I want to emphasize is that this is a start of the year plan. We have made a commitment to reevaluate the plan every two weeks. We have made a commitment in the enhanced virtual model to bring in small cohorts of kids because teachers in this model will be in school as often as they can within their individual needs or family needs or those other elements I spoke about earlier. And our goal is to increase those cohorts that we're able to bring in over time and evaluate the model every two weeks in terms of looking at working toward a full return. The virtual model has a number of enhancements, which include daily, daily live sessions with teachers. What I spoke about earlier in terms of bringing in small groups of kids to interact with teachers, an orientation type program up front to make sure teachers and students have an opportunity to be face to face again in those small groups as we open the year. All of those are enhancements that came out of our exploration of the crisis model that we had to put in place in the spring. And so that's where we are in terms of this set of recommendations. There are, obviously, I've said to Mr. Rabideau, there are pieces in terms of of some of those elements, employee elements in particular, that I cannot discuss publicly and wouldn't discuss publicly. But what I want the board to do is, I hope the board is trusting that we have taken a look and that our goal from the beginning was to bring all of your students back in a safe manner. And so that's our set of recommendations. I will tell you, one of the things that's been great for us over the last few weeks is to be able to work with a couple of physicians. And one of them is actually here in the attendee section. He's on his fourth meeting with us, which is incredible of him to give that time, Dr. Mike Guidi, who's been consulting with us as one of those people who's been advising us on some of the processes that you saw in place the other night in terms of nurses' protocols, medical protocols, looking at size of cohorts, all of those kinds of things. We are not medical professionals. We have not made those judgments on our own. And so that's been work with them as well. So I think it's probably best for me to sort of stop there to look to Dr. Hobbs, Dr. Arkilian. And this is what I want to say for principals. Look, if anybody came here this morning expecting to hear principals have a sort of laid out plan, they've been working toward providing some detail to this plan of what exactly it looks like in their schools for your meeting next Tuesday. This is an emergency meeting to consider the recommendation. And so those pieces are not fully fleshed out, but I am cognizant that they may want to add something to the basic model that we've brought in to date. So I don't know, Dr. Hobbs? Dr. Arkilian?
I would just, the point that I would underscore as kind of a preface to this whole thing is when we're talking about this enhanced virtual, that does not mean the building is closed. The building would be open. Teachers would be in the building. Students in small groups would be able to come in if, whether you're having trouble with algebra or whether you need IEP services, or whether you need to work in a small group safely distanced. All those things are possible in this model, and all those things are encouraged in this model. So it really is a difference if you're visualizing it from the crisis learning that we had in the spring. I just wanted to make sure that I underscored that point. There's a tremendous amount of flexibility and opportunity in the model, at least in the middle school that we put forward.
And I will echo that. As far as, you know, the small groups coming in, it's essential for special education to be part of that. Your new Director of Special Services, Jessica Parsons, along with the principals are working hard to, they're already brainstorming and getting creative as far as how to bring small groups in, particularly for those high priority services, and that's all grades. So pre-K through 8, finding different ways to bring kids in for those services.
Let me just say before I go to the principals that off of our, because this is our fourth meeting on the plan since the last night at 6 o'clock. So if we think we're repeating ourselves, it's not you, it's us. And the one thing I will say here is I think it's really critical that people view that presentation from Wednesday night, not because we made it, but because what we're finding is that people have a lot of questions, and they should. They absolutely should. And a lot of those questions are answered within that presentation. And that presentation is available on the SAU website at www.sau21.org. It's right at the top of the page. You can click on the present. If you just want to look at the slides, you can do that. If you'd rather hear us, you can do that. If you actually want to hear the rest of the board conversation about the plan afterward and what led us to be here this morning, you can do that as well. So I think it answers a lot of questions about model, about grading, about all of those kinds of things that I know people have questions about. Erin or Stephanie, do you want to say anything here?
I can jump in since we're talking a little bit more of the virtual part, and that applies to middle school. And certainly, I would say we all agree that virtual isn't ideal, but we also, I think, all agree that we need to do what's best for our kids and staff in terms of safety. And so for people who are concerned that it's going to look like it looked in the spring, let me just reiterate, it's not. We learned a ton from the spring. We, I feel confident that through the hard work we've been doing this summer and teachers giving them the time that we're giving them before school starts to be prepared. We have a schedule that we're working on that looks a lot. It's very structured. It gives students, you know, a regular class schedule. It breaks groups up into smaller groups. It puts Unified Arts with one grade level a quarter at a time so that students don't have to do all four Unified Arts. That was a big stressor for a lot of families last spring. So each Unified Arts teacher would be attached to a grade level for a quarter, and then they would switch. It would give some opportunities for some integrated learning and some projects that the Unified Arts team can be a part of, which is exciting for us. But I just want families to know that we are working really hard to make it a different experience and to be able to provide the best supports for our students and to have a lot more synchronous learning, which means they're in front of their teachers live every day for a class period. They wouldn't have all of their classes every day. We would break it up so that it's manageable for students and families. So again, you know, certainly our goal is to get kids back into school. I think that's what everybody wants, but we have to work with what we have in front of us, and we have to remember that we have to keep everybody safe. And, but we are making it a priority to make the learning experience much different and much better than our crisis learning because we do recognize that the spring was tough, but like I said, we've learned a lot. And I think we've made a lot of, the committees that worked on that task force, that Return to Instruction Committee has provided us with some great jumping off points that we're working towards. So we're going to do the best we can, but I think we can make your students' experience much different than the spring, for sure.
And we don't have all the answers on this idea of small cohorts yet. But we've talked about it as orientation. We've talked about it in terms of certainly special education and other kinds of supports where kids need to come in. We've talked about it in terms of an art class where a teacher wants to bring in a small group, five people to do that. We're committed to making all of those kinds of things happen. And a big key for us is equity. We don't want somebody closed out of that because they don't have transportation. And so we've even started to talk about how we need to modify our transportation to make that happen. So it's all designed to make sure that we're working toward bringing all kids back, that we're reevaluating those decisions every two weeks as we look at what we can do, at what the virus will allow us to do, what the conditions in the area and what are conditions on the ground in terms of class sizes and social distancing and all that will allow us to do. So we're committed to that. Stephanie?
Okay, I'm sorry, Stephanie. Can I just say one more thing that I can't believe I even forgot to mention because it's so important is that we already have a team working on improving our social emotional learning, improving our RAN block, which is our advisory, and really looking at what the students need and how, you know, it's not just academic. We recognize that social emotional learning piece. And we already have a team that's been working hard even on their own time this summer to enhance that for the fall and make sure that the students have a different experience and connect with adults and have plenty of opportunity for that as well. Sorry, didn't want to forget that.
All right, so I'd just like to say that, you know, obviously, we care very deeply about our students and their families and our staff and their families. We also care about the citizens throughout the school community and know that all the decisions we make have a larger impact on everybody. So we're not taking any decision-making lightly. I want to thank our amazing staff for their continued dedication to our students and for their hard work in recent months, going above and beyond to support our students, each other, and our broader school community and their families. As we meet now, as we meet right now, there are many members of our staff preparing lessons for the fall. They're exploring new options and opportunities that pop up daily in our emails for students for different strategies we can use, whether we're remote or in person. They're participating in professional development opportunities left and right. They're writing letters to students to say hello. They're cleaning and preparing our school. They're preparing meals for the community. And some are riding the bus as we speak to deliver those meals. They went by my house recently, earlier. So we couldn't be, we couldn't ask for a more dedicated staff and really thank them. And we know that our staff really wants nothing more than to be with our students in the school. And this pandemic has really been a huge challenge for all of them. So we also have had many parents and guardians and community members thank us for our hard work so far. But we really want to thank them as well. Our parents and guardians of our students have really stood up to the challenge, and we know that they have many difficult decisions to make and had many decisions to make throughout this process during this unique time. And they've been wonderful partners in the work with our school community, so we really thank them. We are the second largest school in the SAU with approximately 400 students across six grade levels. And although we've surveyed parents and had about a little over a half respond, it's still hard for us to anticipate the actual numbers of families that will choose Remote Learning Academy and in-person instruction. But we're doing our best to prepare for multiple different scenarios so that we can just best support our students, no matter what model, what details we have in front of us. And we thank the SAU and the task force members for their hard work, this plan, and we are looking forward to working with our staff to finalize some of these details of our plan. Our next step is to work with our school leadership team, which we're doing early next week, and then with our broader staff to start working through some of the finer details. And as Bill alluded to, we have our meeting next Tuesday too, so we might be sharing more details there. Just in general, some of the things that we're planning on, just for people to know at this point, obviously, we have, you know, cleaning and disinfecting protocols that we're looking at, relocating possibly the nurse's room so that there's more space, an additional separate space for students and staff if need be, looking at more thoroughly cleaning and more frequent cleaning throughout the building. And we have plans in place for that, which we can share at a later point. We also are looking at just safety protocols. So as was outlined at some of the, in the presentation on, at the Joint Board meeting, we were looking at a self-screening before entering the building. We've purchased infrared thermometers for students in the nurse's room and beyond if need be. We've looking at, you know, the mask protocols that we have in place. And most importantly, you know, trying to still make it, you know, friendly for the students. So figuring out how do we introduce the staff to the students, especially for students who haven't been in our school previously. So trying to figure out ways that we can engage our kindergartners early on in this process and make it a little more friendly than like a doctor's office. But we are looking at, you know, how do we, we're ordering supplies and everything in different ways to make sure that students have more personalized items. We're looking at all the systems in place in the school and how we can adjust those. We are keeping our homerooms as cohorts, as we've talked about in the past. So trying to keep student groups minimal and interactions, minimizing that and trying to see what services we can bring to the classroom. Wherever possible, trying to have two adults in the room so that there's that flexibility for the students and some more personalized learning for them. We're trying to look at bringing, for instance, our Unified Arts to the classroom. In the past, kids would circulate through their classrooms, and they'd have up to 360 students coming through. So instead of having everybody travel, we're trying to bring the supports and instruction to the classroom for the students. And we're trying to look at common planning time, making sure that we have ample planning time for the teachers and for the other support staff. And we're planning on having Chromebooks, and we've purchased them. So kindergarten through 4th grade will have Chromebooks one-to-one for students, and those will be able to travel back and forth between home and school. So if at any point, if we begin in person and for some reason have to go to a more remote model, we're hoping that families would be familiar with that, those devices, and we'll have had training on them, as well as the students. And all of our curriculum we're looking at is having technology-based so that assignments are easily viewable and supports are there, no matter what model we are in. We are also, we purchased a lot of online subscriptions, some that we had done as kind of a trial during the spring. And students have really taken a liking to. Some are more teacher-driven, and some are student self-paced. So students can access those at any point and continue to bump up their reading level and things like that. So we hope that that will really help engage students for years to come, really. And we're looking at, you know, how do we do lunch, trying to get students outside as much as possible? We're trying to do breaks, movement breaks, mask breaks. We're limiting traveling again of people for special services, trying to provide those in the classroom as much as possible, but also, you know, making accommodations for students that have needs beyond the classroom. We, like Erin said, we're focusing on SEL. So right now, we're working on, and that's social emotional learning, sorry for the lingo. Really trying to focus on those first six weeks, knowing that adjusting to coming back to school is going to be a huge adjustment for all involved, just sleeping patterns and bonding and all that. So we're really trying to focus on helping students to come together and work through some of the self-regulation problems and challenges they may have and just getting back in the schedule. And we are trying to assign small groups. So we're looking at, as a staff, because we really felt like it was hard last spring to stay connected to families. So we were looking at trying to assign a small group of students and families to each staff member so that they can be a point of contact and just, you know, a friendly person to just kind of check in with and have as a touch point so we can check on folks and be there if needed. And we're continuing our counseling, no matter with partnerships, with Seco's Mental Health, which comes in and provides some counseling for us. And they're able to do that through telehealth and other means too, so that'll be a great support in addition to our regular social emotional learning. And we're going to be doing a lot of training with parents and guardians, like I said, on the Chromebooks, the Google class and the CSO. And I think we're looking forward to the next school year, and we'll be having a lot of input from different staff and idea sharing in the next few days and coming up with a more concrete plan based on today.
So a couple of things about that. Thank you, Erin and Stephanie. A couple of things about that. What, just sort of emphasizing some points we made on Wednesday night. And since we have a number of attendees, any in-person model, the Seabrook Elementary model as proposed, falls apart if people don't self-monitor and stay home when they have those symptoms. It falls apart. We've seen that around the country already. It falls apart. We also know that we have a very limited pool of substitute teachers right now. We've not, we've said that on Wednesday night. I'll say it here. A very limited pool of substitute teachers. We're trying to increase those numbers, but those numbers don't exist right now. And third, the challenge that we face in what Stephanie just described, because we proposed an in-person model, is that your class sizes are considerably larger than what is, than what is recommended under the CDC guidance. And so one thing that's going to be very, very important as we look at starting to implement this model, if it's approved this morning. But for example, it was at North Hampton, and so one of the first tasks at North Hampton is actually figuring out what number of parents are sending their K through 4th graders to see if the number actually works. If it doesn't work, then we'd have to come back with a different recommendation. So there's a number of moving factors. And I think what I said on Wednesday night is the only thing for certain is that some of our recommendations are going to end up being modified in the next five weeks. Thank you, Mr. Rabideau. We're happy to answer any board questions. I don't know. I know you have a non-public scheduled for one aspect of this discussion, and I'll leave it to you as to where we go next.
Do any of my board members have an immediate question regarding these presentations?
I do. So do we, do we have a plan on if, say, middle school did, say it was voted on, and then the middle school students did remote learning? What is the plan to actually be sure, because, you know, probably a majority of parents do have to work, both parents, that these students are actually getting online every single day? And there is some type of accountability, because I do know in the spring that is absolutely impossible to do, especially if we already have a limited staff, to be able to follow up with each student. Because I, my biggest fear is, is that the middle school and the high school, because of the ages, because I was in high school and middle school before, and school really isn't that important at that age. You don't understand how, you know, how important it is. What, I mean, there's no way that this can be monitored and that there's kids that are not going to fall through the cracks. And I think we all know that.
Well, I'm going to try to answer what I think was the question in there. So I think the question was, you know, how are we proposing to monitor that? And I think that's included in many of the enhancements to the model. So you're right, some of those things didn't work in the spring. One of the reasons that they didn't work, to the extent we would have liked to have seen them work, it was there was not daily live class sessions with attendance and grading as you saw in the presentation on Wednesday night. So those things are part of this plan. There are also opportunities for small group, small groups of students to come in to meet with teachers based on particular assignments they're doing, based on particular projects they're doing, based on particular needs that those students have for reinforcement or help. So there are a number of those sort of monitoring, if you will, safeguards built in to make sure that students are in contact with their teachers on a daily basis. And when they're not, the building develops procedures of what happens next in terms of family contact, student contact, those kinds of home visits, those kinds of mon- The building develops procedures of what happens next in terms of family contact, student contact, those kinds of home visits, those kinds of monitoring. To make sure that, that students aren't, are not slipping through the cracks.
So. If we can have small groups go in to meet with teachers and we can have home monitoring visits done, then why are we not going back to school?
Because of the, because as we explained on Wednesday night, because of cohort sizes. Because of other complications in the factors that I talked about earlier in terms of. Our staffing, in terms of those cohort sizes and numbers of students in classes and numbers of students in your school in those classes. There's a big, big difference between bringing in a small group of five students on an individual basis to work with an art teacher. Or two students to work with a special educator and trying to bring in a group of 18 seventh graders to work in a math class. Those are hugely different.
I'm still concerned, but thank you.
I think one of the other things to keep in mind is that. What is being presented in any of the models is a vast improvement over what was. Put out there in the spring because the spring really, they really had no time to develop a lot of this. And I've heard parents complain about the, the quote, remote learning as it was. Well, this has changed completely. And thanks to the administrators, the teachers and everybody involved, this has been enhanced dramatically. So those concerns should really go away. Once we start school again.
I agree. I agree. But the problem, you know, I think the biggest thing here is, is that during the time that we were all out before. The, the students were out, a lot of the parents were out as well. Because there was, you know, the government came in, they shut down a lot, you know, I work for municipality and we were allowed to work from home. So in the spring, it was easier for parents. At this point, everybody is, most everybody is back to work and it's impossible for especially the middle school. Parents to do, to be there and support their children when they're at work. That, that's, I think that. That's what everyone's forgetting is that, you know, these, these students being at home, they need their parents to support them. As they would be if they were at school with teachers, because that's what happens. But now we don't, the parents don't even have, they're not going to have the availability to do this with their children. And I, and I don't understand, you know. I'm not trying to be harsh, but I think everybody is forgetting that, that parents are at work.
That's unfair. I think it's unfair to say people are forgetting that.
There's parents at work.
I don't, I think, I think it's unfair to say we're forgetting that. I think we, I think we've tried to take that into account, but again, our charge was. To bring back students safely and we're laying out for you based on the CDC guidance, based on the recommendations that we have. Positions we're working with, what we know about the way we can arrange a classroom, all those pieces that you saw on, on. On Wednesday night in terms of protocols around nurses and, and safety monitoring of students and those kinds of things. We're laying out the best set of recommendations. To keep people safe. And so we're trying to do those in a timely enough fashion, right? So that we can work with people and people can work out. What that means to their individual situation. And that's why it's so important that whatever we're going to try to do. That we, that we do it soon so that we, we, we have that five weeks to begin to help people implement.
I appreciate that. It, it just whether you do it now or you did it three months ago. Unfortunately, not everybody's going to be able to change their situation.
I entirely agree.
If you have students not logged on and there is a home visit. What happens? The, the, the parents at work, the students not logged on.
We don't go to a home visit before there's a number of other, I, I probably shouldn't have even jumped there, right?
It's okay. I'm just, I, I'm just, and I didn't mean to say that everybody's forgetting, but the reality is it's almost like no. It just seems like that we all know that's an issue.
Yes, there are a number of different.
Came to me with my phone ringing off the hook yesterday is, do they realize that we all work? And what do you say to that? Because. Of course you guys all realize they work. So that's why everybody, you know, these. And not everybody can be home with their, their students and they want to make sure their children are getting education.
So I want to.
Safe we try to make it.
I want to be clear that if I wasn't on Wednesday night, you could direct me to bring everyone back and I can't do it. So that doesn't work. So I can't do. I can't do what, what, what isn't safe. It's part of my charge in this position. Part of the charge I was given by the joint board. So again, we've given you our best thinking on, on student safety and trying to transition. From something at the beginning of the year. And again, I want to emphasize that, that issue of transition. But the idea is to, is to relook at this every couple of weeks with. With what's going on in terms of the data in our region, what's going on in terms of the, the, the data nationwide. What's going on in terms of, of being able to do those small groups and increase them over time and to work toward an ultimate goal. And by the way, to be very transparent about where we are in that process, but to work toward an ultimate goal that has everyone back in school when we can safely do that.
Well, that would also depend on when we have the amount of staff as well, correct? Cause right now we're going to be short staffed. I think that's an issue.
I, I, I can't, I can't speak to that specifically. What I can say is, and again, from the presentation on Wednesday. Is that there are particular. Issues under the Americans with Disabilities Act, under the Family Medical Leave Act. Under the COVID Act that was passed earlier this year that give all employees certain rights to accommodations. And, and we, we, we should and we must. Work with those particular accomod, accommodations. They are, they are a right under federal law. And so one of the elements that goes into this is us making sure that we. That we work with those accommodation requests where they're valid. And that we try to find a way to match. The, the needs of what we're trying to do in terms of opening schools with those needs. Two weeks ago at a joint board meeting, you heard me say. That one of the ideas that was, that was being advanced in a number of other districts. A number of other southeastern districts was to allow employees to bring their children to our school districts or to those school districts for this year. I can tell you that one of the reasons, and I did say it that night, it's recorded. One of the reasons that those districts were having that conversation was in an attempt to provide another accommodation for employees who may have an issue because of their own. Childcare, because of decisions being made in their own district. So that, that, I, I brought that up that, that evening as an example of something that could help us with the accommodations. But other, I mean, I, I've not been shy in the other meetings about saying. If you look at what Hampton School District did recently with the hybrid model, that, that caused us issues. That caused us issues across our SAU with people, because a number of those people live there. And they now have the kinds of issues that you're, that you're laying out that other people have as well. And, and so they have a right to ask for certain accommodations or modifications. As a result of that, and we have an obligation to try to work with them and to come up with creative strategies. So that we can make sure we can staff schools. But again, that's one element. Of a number of elements that we tried to lay out in Wednesday night. That are part of this conversation. I hope that was helpful.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Didn't hear anything at all. With that. Are we recommending to go non-public?
Um, there is, there is a non-public on, on the agenda. I believe it's under item C. I don't have that text in front of me. Rhonda, I believe you.
Yes.
I don't know. Don't know the order on your agenda. I don't have it up in front of me. I'm sorry. So I don't know. You can open up the non-public or first or. But can I just emphasize again, I'm in the Winnetka meeting this morning because of the way we were asked to sketch. As of what we had, we have a meeting at noon. So I just would ask.
I believe I'm going to reach out to the board if we should go to the non-public now, then come back for public comment afterwards. Is that agreeable to everyone? It does change the agenda slightly. Okay. All right. I will take a motion. Now, the important thing is the, the participants, the attendees who are here now, please remain what this, what will happen is. Our board will go to a non-public meeting, which is another Zoom meeting, and then come back into this meeting. So please stay tuned. I guess that's the only way I can put it.
Right. I will not close this meeting. This meeting will stay active. We'll just put a screen up notifying people that you're in non-public.
And I'll take a motion to go to non-public under RSA 91. Rhonda, help me out here.
RSA 91 dash A colon three, two, C.
I'll entertain that motion.
Make the motion.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second, please? Great. I have a motion and a second. Rhonda, would you please take the roll call?
Yes. Forrest Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Jessica Brown. Jessica, are you still with the meeting? I'll put she's not present. Kelly Huber.
Yes.
And Mike Rabado.
Ah, yes. Rhonda, would you please direct Jessica when she does return, please?
I will do that.
Again, to Mr. Rabado's comment, those attendees, if you would just remain here while the board is in their non-public session. And we, we will return and the next agenda item after that is, is public comment here from, from, from any of you that want to. So we'll, we'll be back shortly.
Thank you.
And so board members, analysts, you guys do have an invite to non-public in your inbox. See you there.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, the meeting is recording again and I believe there's a motion to end non-public and resume the public meeting or not. Do I have a motion on that?
Yes. Welcome back. I'll entertain a motion to resume the public meeting.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion from Forrest and a second from Kelly. Is that correct?
Yes.
Rhonda, would you please take a vote?
I will do that. Forrest.
Yes.
Guys, I just got on. Could, could we re, can you guys just say what the motion is again, please?
It's to resume the public meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for coming back.
So Jennifer?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes, thank you.
I have that vote recorded. The meeting is back in session.
All right. Okay, at this time. Bill, do we want to open this up at this time for public comment?
I, I can, I can help you. So at this point. The board will open up a public comment. If, if you would do that, Rhonda, let's see how I do with this. If you indicate you want to make public comment. By using the hand raising feature. Then Rhonda will call on you and, and open up your microphone so that you can speak to the board. The board, I believe, in their policies has allotted 15 minutes for this, but they can extend. Beyond that, that's not 15 minutes individually for each comment. That's a total amount of time, but they can extend. That generally speaking, the board does not respond. To that, there are some specific questions if time allows. In our other meetings that the board has asked that we attempt to answer those questions again if time. Allows. And I just want to point out to the board again that we are, we're up against a time limit of noon. A noon start to our, to our fifth board meeting in the last two days. So, so, so those are sort of the constraints of the, of the public comment period. So I think. If you'd like to make a comment to the board, this would be the time to raise your hand. And so that Rhonda can, can call on you so that you can address the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great. Rhonda?
Yes. Well, I do see your hand raised and I allow you to talk. We just need you to state your name, your first and last name. And. If you reside in Seabrook, just provide your address. Cause I, the names that pop up on here don't tell us anything really. Somebody that's SMB.
Rhonda, can I add one piece to that? So word does recognize people who are affiliated with the school or school district. And who don't necessarily reside in the community of Seabrook. But, but again, to Rhonda's point, if you'd state your name. Address and affiliation with the school, that would be great. Thank you.
So I see SMB 14. If you could please provide us. With your information and your comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good. Hi, I'm Maria Brown and I'm a resident taxpayer Seabrook. Also, great interest in the school. So I would like to start off by, first of all, Kelly, I think it is. I don't see her on here. But I think I heard her speak. I just want to thank you for asking questions and I, it seems like when you do ask them that it's. Kind of a tough thing for you to do, but I really appreciate that you do ask for the public because that is what you're here for as well as the other board members. I just want to thank you first off. And my questions are going to be, first of all, we are two separate schools at Seabrook Schools. I see that you have in-house school for the younger children, fourth and under, but the middle school, we're going remote. There's a lot of, a lot of questions for that. First of all, the number of students of the elementary school, could you state that? And that can be Mr. Dr. Lepini. I'm sure you have those numbers. I just wanted the numbers of the elementary and middle school to date of students.
I don't have the specific numbers. I believe the total is around 700 and what we've been spending most of our time on is looking at those in terms of grade levels because. Real, as you, as you've sort of illustrated in your question, that's, that's one of the. Is the, is the numbers of students per grade level per class and then whether we can operate within the, the six foot guidance and the CDC guidance. To bring those students in safely.
Dr. Lepini, my question actually was how many elementary, I think Mrs. Lefranti had said 400 roughly. And how many middle school students roughly? Maybe. Mrs. Mulberry can answer that.
We're at about 300, 300, sorry, 305.
Excellent. Thank you. And then my other question would be. The difference between allowing the elementary and allowing the middle school to stay home, elementary to come in. We, I've heard you all say safety first and I agree with you. It's a horrible time and safety is first. However, I find it very hard as a past school board member and as a resident to understand. How we could bring in the fourth grade and under to school and not the middle school. And I'm going to point to Forrest if I can for this one. Forrest has worked with a lot of kids, ages fifth through eighth, a lot overall. And I think that there's a lot more to just the learning scope, obviously, of fifth through eighth grade in Forrest. I would have to ask you in. If you could just comment, how important it is to have the fifth through eighth grade children in school structured in a supervised. Setting. And the other piece of it is, is I believe in my opinion, it's much more easier for them to put a mask on and adhere to things like that, like washing your hands and hygiene. Than it would be for elementary, but that's just my opinion. But if you could share as a board member, how you feel about those. That age group as a board member not being in school in a structured setting.
Sorry. No, put me on this spot, Maria. I can do.
You're so good with the kids.
I would love to answer that. Um, so on a traditional year, Maria, I, and of course this is my feeling on social engagement and students having. That direct learning along with direct social engagement and all of that rolled into it is, I think. And this is coming from a school board member, just as important as academics. It really is. Kids learn by being together. They learn. Kids learn by being together, they learn by engaging. On a traditional year, I would be rallying for us to put down the technology, for us to get kids to be face-to-face, for us to, and that's exactly what we do in SAS when we're after school, is to take away all the stuff that we, that they usually use when they're, when they're not with us, and work together. However, in, in the climate that we're in right now, and I struggle with this area as well, and I'm glad you asked it, it's a question, because even reopening our annual program, we're finding ways where we can do in-person in small cohorts. And that's exactly what our enriched virtual learning is allowing us to do. It's not the remote learning that we were doing last March through June. Erin, you did a great job, we're talking about you were pretty blatant, you know, it wasn't good. It wasn't good, but it also wasn't a planned event that we structured together. We had one day before we were out of the school, and every teacher, every staff that was working with kids, had to plan something on the go to make sure we were at least trying to accommodate the best that we could. I feel that. I relate it back again to SAS, because that's exactly what we had to do. So I'm going to go out here and say I 100% am pushing for social engagement, and these kids need that. You're absolutely right for a multitude of reasons. But if we look at the safety guidelines, and we take a look at the smaller cohorts that are going to be allowed with that enriched virtual learning, we're going to get that. We're going to get that. Our kids are not going to be sitting in front of a computer every single hour, every single day, with buildings shut down and, and no access to their teachers. That's not it at all. So to answer your question, I'm with you 100% on the social engagement. You know that. You know me. But I, I would be, I would feel neglectful, and I would feel wrong, if I pushed our kids into what I would, I would look at as an unsafe environment if we got all of them into that school. So I hope, I hope I answered your question. I probably didn't give you the answer you wanted, but I hope I answered it to you to the best of my ability, Maria.
Okay, we have another person here. We've got Christine Kaiser. Ms. Kaiser, I'm going to allow you to talk now.
Hi, everybody. I'm Christina Kaiser. I live in Seabrook, and I have two kids in the elementary school. And I, first of all, I just want to say that I don't envy any of you, and I don't envy our teachers currently, because having a teaching degree as well, I can't imagine transitioning to this whole program and all the things that you're doing, and I appreciate everything that you're doing. And I don't think that, obviously, there's one right option for anyone. I think no matter what you choose, there will always be people that don't, that don't appreciate it, don't approve it, whatever. I guess my biggest question for remote learning, the sample proposal that was put out as a possible virtual schedule for, for the elementary school specifically, for the non-pre-K and kindergarten children. When I look at it, I see a lot of time specifically in front of the computer, which I understand the need for that based on what, you know, the spring was like everybody at our, has already talked about. So I understand the structure necessary for a lot of students that maybe their parents are working and those things, but for children that maybe would benefit from a kind of work-at-your-own-pace environment, is there anything that is kind of put in place for students that maybe are on par with, you know, the education, their levels are good, and we have parents that are at home that can help? Is there anything that's set up for that kind of situation specifically, where they won't have to necessarily be in front of the computer all day long? I want them to have the live, you know, the live teaching. I appreciate that, and I, and I like that a lot. I just don't know if I would love a full day of school, but in a, in front of a computer, if that makes sense.
Yeah. If I can start that and then turn it over to Dr. Hobbs. Great question, thank you so much. So what, what I want to make sure is that I do is that the context of the question is really about the remote learning academy option within the elementary. So this is, this is different than what we're talking about, the middle level, and I know this gets very confusing, but we're in schools like the elementary where we're offering the opportunity for people to come back, we're also offering for parents who are uncomfortable with that, or who choose it for another reason, a remote learning academy option, which would occur across the state. So teachers wouldn't necessarily be teachers from Seabrook, et cetera. And so what we did in that modeling Wednesday night was what some of those schedules would look like. And so, Dr. Hobbs, I'll, I'll ask you to sort of comment on the specifics of the question about sort of opportunities to be face-to-face with teachers, and how much is too much, and then opportunities to have work that students can do, sort of not in those, in Zoom meetings and, and Google meet, meetings and things like that.
Right, thank you. And thanks for the question, Christina. It's been, we've talked a lot around these exact issues. I'll just, yeah, I'll say, first of all, the, the sample schedule was from an SAU-wide committee. It was part of our task force. So, you know, that's certainly going to iterate. It's going to change and be, the schedules can be responsive based on student need. But I made this point the other night at our, the joint board meeting, and I think it deserves just emphasizing here. You know, the synchronous learning, it's, it's, I would think of it as a parallel to classroom instruction. Look, the, it's, it's just like, if you stand up and lecture in a classroom all day long, it's not great teaching, right? You need to have dynamic interactions, you need to have group work, small, small groups, discussions, all the, all the rich stuff that, that we do in classrooms. I would just take that notion, and I would, I would bring it over to the synchronous learning environment scheduled for our kids. So if, if a student does choose this virtual option, it doesn't mean they're sitting, staring at a Zoom screen for the scheduled time during the course of the day. It could mean they're collaborating in those small breakout rooms, it could be they're, they're working one-on-one with a teacher, and it could be that independent study that you talked about. Hey, go out in nature, look for X, Y, and Z, I'll see you in 45 minutes, and let's do a share. I mean, it could look like any of those things. So I think, I think the flexibility is there. It's just something we need to articulate and expect, frankly, from our teachers.
Right, and that, that makes a lot of sense. And again, I, I want to say that I don't envy any teacher that's trying to adapt to this new environment. And again, I appreciate everything that you guys are doing to really keep, try to keep as many people in mind as you can. I think I, like you said, I appreciate the, you know, the in-person feel of the virtual learning in that sense, to try to make it as much like a school day, a normal school day as possible. I just, I have concerns about trying to do that. I am lucky enough to, to be able to, to help my children at home in that environment, and I know a lot of parents that, you know, obviously, they work outside the home, they can't do that. But for me, it kind of feels like I would be here all day monitoring it, but not actually helping in my own way. Is that, I don't know if that makes sense. It's, again, it's just trying to work through it, and I know you guys are trying to work through it too, so I don't want to just beat a dead horse. But I think that's my biggest concern with remote learning is just that, that it would be a lot, which again, I, and honestly, I don't have a better solution as far as that's concerned, so I don't say that in an accusatory way to say like, you guys need to do a better job. But that would be my biggest concern of just making sure that it's, just at, I don't know, that there are maybe some options for students that are doing really well, and that, that, that don't mind remote learning, that maybe that there are some ways that they can kind of do enrichment activities, and maybe that the schedule is not so rigid that seven hours, you know, we, you have to make sure that these seven hours throughout the day, we can kind of go in and come back out, and especially with two kids in elementary school, and trying to balance both of those. And again, I don't want to say that because I have better options. I just felt like I needed to share those concerns.
Great concern, thank you.
We've got Andrew Wallace.
Hey folks, hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Andrew Wallace. I'm the president of Seacoast Education Association. I am very thankful for you, for the chance to address the board today, and I appreciate your work on behalf of students and teachers in SAU 21 in these difficult times. Thank you for that. I'm here to represent the thoughts and concerns of teachers regarding the upcoming school year. My first point I wanted to address is one that often gets overshadowed in all this, and that is how much we teachers and staff missed in-person teaching and learning and connecting with our students this past spring. As teachers, this profession is our passion. It's fun, it's rewarding, it's difficult, and it's inspiring. For so many reasons, we can't wait to get back to our classes and students. And this brings me to a very different point. The health and safety of our students, their families, this community, and of course, our fellow teachers, our custodial staff, our administrators, our nurses, our paraprofessionals, and everyone. Simply put, we're concerned about everyone's safety in the midst of an ongoing pandemic, and especially when we're considering putting several hundred to 1,000 people together in school buildings. This isn't a theoretical conversation. COVID is already in our schools in New Hampshire. Only a few days ago, Barrington reported a case of COVID-19 in their schools. Recent numbers in Massachusetts reveal upwards of 300 new COVID cases each day on average, and the rate of transmission in Massachusetts is now up to 1.06, which indicates that the virus is spreading. New Hampshire's rate of transmission is currently at 104 and increasing as well. During these discussions, the pandemic's effect on children are often underreported. However, this virus does not just affect older community members. As of a week ago, Florida had reported more than 31,000 children ages 17 and under have had the coronavirus, and 303 of them have been hospitalized. In that state, over the past few weeks, pediatric hospitalizations are up 23%, and the percentage of children infected in Florida is still over 10%. Five children there have died. A seven-year-old student died in Georgia just yesterday, while numbers in schools continue to climb all over the South as they reopen. Even the private school in North Carolina, lauded by our vice president for reopening, was forced to close after a student tested positive. In addition to getting the virus, children can spread the virus, as recent studies indicate that children as young as 10 can infect others in the same capacity as adults. With all this in mind, the recent increase in COVID cases means that Rockingham County needs to think differently about health and safety. And we are. We're meeting today safely on Zoom rather than meeting in person. It's a state of emergency. It's our job together to protect the lives and well-being of SAU 21 students, employees, and this community. Our teachers, our nurses, our paraprofessionals, everyone, they need your consideration, and they need your support in a politicized atmosphere where despite the debate, 160,000 Americans in this country have died. Everyone involved in education needs a safe environment in schools, if that's possible, and support for learning outside of schools when it isn't possible. As you've agreed, smallest possible cohort sizes, availability and consistent use of masks, PPE, social distancing, and proper ventilation are centralist in this endeavor. And if those numbers don't work, then in-person schooling doesn't work, and we may get to a place soon where that math simply doesn't work at all. Even with these safeguards in place, we need to say that SAU 21 employees' concerns are not usually matters of choice in returning to school. Many have serious health issues that require changes to their working environment so they can be successful, or they have children who attend other schools with different schedules, or they have family members with serious health conditions. There are a variety of reasons why they may not be returning to their classrooms, and this is beyond their choice, but they all want to continue their practice and achieve the success that we have accomplished in the past year in SAU 21. Remember, our schools boast some of the best numbers in the state and are consistently ranked in top 10 lists in New Hampshire. According to our most recent survey, 83% of 268 C-members, the vast majority of which do not have medical conditions currently, but they have stated that they're very concerned about their health and their family's health. But they're all trying to make the adjustments so that they can teach, we can all be successful here. These concerns about health are the same reasons that up to 33% of SAU 21 parents are keeping their children at home in the fall, too. When you make decisions as a board, and we appreciate that you do, let the health and safety of our students and staff continue to be your top priority in both word and deed. We teachers are looking forward to working with the students of SAU 21 again, and sharing in those great times that we miss so much, and we look forward to doing so in the safest environment possible in the midst of a pandemic. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Andrew.
It looks like Maria has another question. Hi, Maria, is that you again?
Yeah, hi, Rhonda. I actually was speaking, and I, I didn't, I guess I shut myself off, I don't know. But I want to thank the gentleman, the president, I think he said of the teachers' union that just spoke. And with that said, with what he's saying, and so many unknowns, and the fact that we're still in the planning stages, I feel like nothing's set in stone at this point, and the numbers, that I would ask our school board, who is directly the, the voice for we, the people, to, because I can't figure out why elementary would be going and middle school wouldn't, that in all fairness to the staff, to their families, to the kids, to our families, and to our community, that they consider pushing out both schools remote as you have one, and I don't think one safety for middle should be any different for elementary, and as I said, unknown, and then revisit maybe in the beginning of November to see how things are going, to put the kids back to school in January. I just don't think it's a time, and I agree with the president of the union 100%, as well as the figures, that we are ready to say, we're going to put those little children in the classroom that wipe their nose, touch their face, have to be told, can you wash your hands, can you, I don't think that you all want to be put in that place of making sure that you can say those kids are going to be safe, because you don't know and we don't know. However, I think the school board is the voice for the people, and I would ask that you do consider that in your decision today. And I know Mr. Dr. Lepini has said several times, he can't speak of the staff that's coming back and not coming back, but certainly the percentage, because if it's a family leave, that's voted in public by the school board. So I don't think it's any different to release, how many, what is the percentage of staff in middle and elementary school teachers committed to coming back at this time? And if it's not 100%, okay, but if it's 83% that have concerns, it's got to be a big percentage in our district, too. So I would ask the board to consider that, to hold off until you have a little more answers on just saying, okay, we're going back to school with the elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Any further comments this time? Any other questions from the board members? Don't see any. Okay. I guess with everything said and done, and listening to the feedback from the, the families and SEA. Bill, I believe we're ready to put a vote forward?
Well, that's, the motion, any motion is really up to the board. Again, I can just outline our plan, if that's where you want, what you want.
Right, recap it, please.
The recommended plan at this point is to have an in-person model and a remote learning academy option for students at Seabrook in grades pre-K through four, and to operate the enhanced virtual learning model for students in grades five through eight.
Okay, all the board members clearly understand what the ramifications are of that, I hope. All right. Given that, and no further questions, I will take a motion, either for or against. The plan is put forward by the superintendent and SAU 21.
I'll make a motion as the plan, as it's presented, to go forth for the Seabrook School District.
Thank you. May I have a second? All right. Hearing no second on this, unless you're all muted? Is that correct, Jen, Kelly, and Jessica?
I'm muted, but I can hear it, I'm just not answering.
Okay.
I agree, same with me.
Okay. And Jen?
Same.
Okay. Well, we have a motion, but no second for this. I believe that I will make a second. and consequently push that vote forward at least.
Are you ready for a roll call?
Rhonda, would you please state exactly what this may be?
I have this as a motion to approve the proposed plan for the return to school for Seabrook School District as presented.
Okay, thank you. Please take a roll, roll call.
Forrest?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Abstain.
Jessica?
No.
Kelly?
No.
And Mike?
Ah, yes.
I have the vote recorded. The vote failed 2, 2 to 1.
Bill, at this point in time?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure how to give, how to give you counsel because I'm not sure what that vote means, actually. It means you don't have a plan. And I, I'm not sure, again, I've tried, I've tried to offer this as tactfully as I can. There are certain parameters around a set of decisions that, that, that are what we can operate within and, and propose options. It would, I mean, again, I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure of where we stand on that vote and, and what we're being asked to do.
Can I speak for a second, please, Mike?
Yes, please.
Hi, I just have a problem voting against what the people of Seabrook want. 66% of our parents voted for our kids to be back in school face-to-face. I'm elected by the residents and I feel like I need to speak for the residents. However, I do understand that, you know, it may not work the way we'd like it to work. But do you have a alternative plan other than what was presented to us? Because I am a little confused by one group going back and not the other group. I almost would be, think that maybe something like Hampton. Two days, you know, half the school goes back, you know, Wednesday's remote, the other two days back in school. Like, I, I, I don't understand why we're doing one side and not the other. If we can do some, why can't we split them so they both equally have the learning experience face-to-face? And also make it an option for the parents who don't want to send their kids face-to-face to do remote completely. So I would like to make a motion that we separate the classes into two groups.
You're going to make a motion without a recommendation from the administration, is that right?
Well, no, I'm, but I'll let you talk.
No, 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 you're making a motion.
I asked, I'm asking you, do you have an alternative? Because obviously this one's not getting, is this something that would be feasible, I guess?
We don't believe so, and we've discussed this at the joint board meeting. We've discussed it today, as, as a matter of fact, most of the reasoning.
Well, unfortunately, I'm at work and this, you know, it didn't really work out for me and I'm doing the best I can between lines to be present. So, well, I, I guess that's.
We'd have to go back and revisit that and, and come back, and that's obviously going to hold up the planning. So, I don't, I don't have that today.
So you don't believe.
Can I just say one thing about just that, that hybrid, Jessica, just to, when you put kids in the building, say Monday, Tuesday, and then they're out Thursday, Friday, because the other half are being taught by our teachers, they don't have access to our teachers. So at least when they're remote, they would have access to their teachers full four days a week. My concern with the hybrid is it's, it's half-time of access to teachers and it's less education than even if we were remote. So I hear what you're saying. I just felt the need to say that that's my concern with lack of access to teachers on the other days that kids aren't in the building.
So, and David, and David can expand on that, but really, I mean, even in what's been advanced in Hampton, Aaron's exactly right. Two days a week with teachers have access to, to their teachers, the other three days, essentially they have asynchronous assignments, right, that they're working on from home. So there is not as much contact with teachers in that model as there is in what we proposed. David, do you want to say a word to that?
Yeah, I mean, sure, it's the contact, but it's also the curriculum. We'd have to be in a position where we'd tell the Seabrook public that we're getting through half of our curriculum in a given year because we're seeing our kids face-to-face half the time. And the other is going to be asynchronous, kind of like what we saw in the spring. So I, I think there are also safety issues that, that we've covered, covered with that. The last point I'd make on this is, is the durability. If we set up in this hybrid model, as soon as somebody gets the sniffles or somebody gets sick, whether that's student or teacher, there's a lot more potential for that model to collapse in on itself. And we all understand the quarantine protocols with that. The model that we proposed actually allows us to be flexible and respond to that in a little bit more of an effective way.
I guess I just have a problem with the middle schoolers missing out with the face-to-face. I, I think they, they, they need that. Probably even more so than the, the littler kids at times. There's no way we could do two days for elementary, two days for middle. I mean, I, I'm, I'm just, I just don't understand why half can go, half can't go. I'm, I'm just not okay with that. I really was okay with the choice, when we had the choice. You either send your kids or you don't send your kids. And I understand if we, we go that route, it, it may not happen. But I, I'm not, I'm just not comfortable with the plan that we have in front of us right now.
But one of the reasons, one of the things that we've described in, in this plan is that there are opportunities and increased opportunities for those face-to-face experiences throughout, starting at the beginning of the year and moving throughout. In other words, that there'll be small, small cohorts. We've had the same conversation at the high school. Small cohorts working with, with teachers. And in for certain kinds of things that we've tried to detail here this morning and Wednesday night, that I won't go into now in the interest of time. But, but we think we've built a move toward more and more of what you're, you're laying out into the plan. And, and quite frankly, one of the other reasons that the plan was structured in this way is that what we saw in the spring and heard in the spring was that younger kids had more difficulty with the online experience. And so there was a charge to us and a goal of getting younger kids in particular back. That's why you saw the recommendation that you saw at North Hampton and why the recommendation here. Again, it may fall apart based on the numbers and whether we can actually accommodate that number of kids in classes. It may, it may fall apart. And, but, but, but that's where, that's where we've started, again, in the North Hampton conversation at the very least.
I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to say that I, that's where I stand, is the same as Jess. You know, after the meeting the other night and the amount of phone calls I received and how many people voiced how concerned they were and, you know, the surveys they sent back, I feel the same way. You know, the, with the amount of people that requested for their students, their children to go back face-to-face, you know, that's why we're, I was voted in to speak for what their, you know, concerns were. And for me not to vote, what I just voted would not be doing what they asked me to do when they voted me in. And that's, I, I, I've struggled with it, believe me.
So the only thing I can say, Mr. Rabado, is that we, we don't have a model moving forward and we're, we're essentially out of time. I'm sorry. So we're, we're, we're going to have to work with you to try to figure out what our next steps are. But we don't have a model to return to school in Seabrook right now.
All right. Then we do have a meeting scheduled for next week. Would it be possible to have a model ready by then?
I can't answer that. I, I, I can't answer that. I don't know. Because there's an intersection of these models as well. So I, I, I can't, I can't, I can't answer that. That may take more time than that. Quite frankly, since Wednesday night, the amount of time that this team's been asked to put into these efforts for five different school boards, you know, I, I, I can't, I can't answer that right now. I, I don't, I'd probably be able to answer when we might be able to make some proposals Monday, possibly by Tuesday. But I'm not sure I can have something to you by Tuesday night.
Okay.
Bill, can I ask a quick question? So has there been any thought of maybe half-days for the middle school? Maybe two classes in the AM, one in the PM?
That's a transportation issue that we talked about early on in this conversation. It would require us to double the transportation. We did look at that model and, and we, we actually, we, we looked at that model early on and it, it does not work for transportation purposes.
But a lot of the people denied using the transportation. They were going to bring their children anyway, right?
We're under an obligation to provide it. We'd have to, we'd have to double our runs. Because if anybody wanted it, we'd have to double our runs. Because it isn't a matter of reducing the numbers, we still have to provide it.
I think one of the important things to remember through all of this, this is a, as Forrest pointed out, this is a first step to go back to school. This isn't the last step. This isn't the middle step. This is the first step. And I think that given all of the parameters and all the meetings and resources and, and such, this is their best recommendation for our schools, so.
Can I retract my vote?
I believe we'd have to have another motion on the board, correct, Bill?
Right, you would have to do a whole nother vote, I believe.
Right. If you make a motion, since you did vote as a negative, I believe you can reintroduce that vote. Am I correct? Bill?
I, I don't, I don't actually know. Were, we're an abstention in, in the ability to ask for reconsideration, because that's really requested. I, I don't, I don't actually know that. I'm sorry.
In Robert's rules, if you do vote negative or no abstain, it would reintroduce that.
So you're saying an abstention actually goes in the negative? And I, I, I believe I remember that from somewhere back in my Robert's Rules days, but it's been a while.
So Jen, you may, you may make that motion.
Or a reconsideration, I think is the actual motion.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to change my vote to yes instead, after hearing all the comments and that's what I feel like is best right now.
Jen, can I actually ask that if that's what you want to do, that the actual motion, if I may, that's okay? That the actual motion is that Jen's making a motion for a reconsideration of the question of the, the plan?
Yep.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Rabado, I don't want to step in, but.
That's okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to reconsider. The vote is previously put forward. Any other questions, discussions? Rhonda, would you please take a roll call, vote?
I'm going to read this to make sure that I have it correctly. It's a motion to reconsider the previous vote to approve the proposed van, plan for the return to school for Seabrook School District.
Thank you. Please take a roll call. Vote.
Forrest?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jessica?
No.
Kelly?
No.
And Mike?
Yes.
I have the vote recorded and the vote passed.
Thank you. These, you know, I'm going to say, these are hard times. This is a tough vote for everyone. I see Forrest sitting there sighing. I, I know it was a tough vote. And this is, this is how we're going to move forward. And maybe tomorrow we'll have something different. I mean, Dr. Lupini knows that this is so fluid. It's almost like a cascading waterfall, the way we're having to make changes based on different directions given by the state, the feds, and our own community. So I, I thank you all for the vote.
Mike, thank you. And thank you to all of you. I know, I, I just want to reiterate what Mike said and I, I, and I, as I said to you earlier, I'm sorry that we're here having this conversation because it's not a conversation any of us want to have. Our next steps will be to, with principals and to begin to get something out, particularly in K to 4, to, to gauge how many students are coming back, to make sure we can meet those parameters, as well as to continue to develop the specifics of this plan that you heard principals talk to earlier so that we can get information out to parents, so that we can make them confident that what we're doing is in the best interest of their kids at this moment in time.
Thank you very much. Without further ado, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, please.
I have a motion. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. If you just raise your hand to confirm with Rhonda or say yes or chat or whatever you want to do.
Yes.
Is everybody unanimous in adjourning?
I believe so.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Today is next week.